Tuesday, September 6, 2022. Please stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is approval of the minutes from the August 16, 2022 meeting.
Remove to approve the minutes of the village board of trustees meeting of August 16, 2022.
Any changes?
I just have a small change on page 2A. We were talking about the water rates. Second to last sentence, it says, "The ordinance also proposes the largest water users pay a higher rate from $13 to $15 per cubic foot." That kind of sounds like they're going to pay a range of...
Oh, right.
So I would rather say a large water user's rate would increase from $13 per 100 feet to $15 per 100 feet.
Makes sense.
Well, I think it's a single user.
Right, right. But I think he's talking about a range.
No, no, right. No, I agree with that. I agree with that change, too. I had one other change in that section as well. So the reference to last fall should refer to our implementation of the flat fee. The DePage Water Commission increased its rate earlier this year in the spring. So I would propose to say, this is the second sentence, to that end, insert "last fall the board implemented, blah, blah, blah." And then the second sentence, instead of saying "last fall," we would say "this spring, the cost of water has increased 4.2%."
Okay. Thank you.
Got it?
Yep.
Anything else? Do we have a second?
Second.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Pastuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Thank you.
So that brings us to President's report. Last meeting on August 16, we passed out some information on where we are in revenues for the village. And we saw that year-to-date, our revenues are tracking at or better than budget. And we talked about at that point that we would have a similar report with respect to expenses. I have a draft report here, and I think we're going to try to make it more user-friendly to distribute to the trustees. But the punchline is the same, that the expenses are roughly tracking where they should be vis-à-vis budget. Because I think at this point, if you assume that the expenses are linear throughout the year, we should be about 67%. And I think most of the expenses are right around there, or less than that, a few are higher. But all in all, we're tracking on expenses. But we'll have a more detailed report on that at the next meeting. I'd also like to welcome our new staff members at the end of the table over there. Assistant Village Manager Andre Peterson, who joined us on August 22. Andre will have the benefit of working closely with Brad, who will be retiring in February of next year. We're all going to miss Brad, but it's good to have them both working at the same time so Brad can give his wealth of knowledge, pass on his wealth of knowledge to Andre. And Andre will absorb not only Brad's duties, but also those previously performed by Trevor, who left to pursue other opportunities in August. For those of you who don't know, the pool is closed for the season, but not for your dogs. Owners can bring their dogs to swim at the Hinsdale Community Pool this Saturday, I'm not making this up, September 10, for this annual dogs-only event. For more information, please visit the Parks and Recreation Department website, or call 630-789-7090. So how long has this annual dog swimming event been going on?
It's been years.
It has been years?
Yes.
I've been village president for a long time, and I don't remember ever the dog swimming event.
That's why we decided to add it to President's conference.
Oh, I see.
It's very unique.
Okay. Do we have to worry about fur in the filters or anything like that?
I don't believe so.
Okay. All right. Makes sense to me.
Don't worry about fur.
Fur? I don't know. If a dog sheds in the pool, I don't know if that's a good thing, but they're going to drain it then before they put people back in.
This is the end of the year.
Okay. All right. So bring your dogs this Saturday, September 10, for the dog swim event. Okay, citizens petition. Any citizen wishing to speak on any matter, on or off the agenda? If you've got something that's on the agenda, you may want to wait until that comes up. But if you've got something that's not on the agenda, this is a good time. Sure. Just state your name and your address, if you're a Hinsdale resident, or if you're a business owner, state the business.
Hi, my name is Joseph McGlynn. I'm not a Hinsdale resident, but I represent Pride Stores over at 149 East Stockton Avenue. I live in Naperville. Worked for the Pride Stores for about 10 years. Prior to that, I worked for BP for 20. So I've been affiliate, I've never been in here, but I've been affiliated with 149 East Stockton for 30 years.
Okay.
Whether operating or overseeing. I know that we did come in to look for an amendment, maybe about a year and a half ago. Not sure which one from our company had come in, looking to adjust our A1 liquor license to an A2 liquor license. Just thought I would just throw it out there, just kind of see where we're at as far as that, see if we could get any consideration. I know that there's not too many other, or no other, gas stations in Hinsdale, I believe currently, that have an A2, which would be to sell hard liquor. We have 13 other locations currently with an A1 license. We have eight with an A2. We've been in business for, going on 40 years next year. And, you know, we try to operate as, you know, sound in the community, and it's a very small amount of floor set, it's under 5%. Larger bottles type stuff, none of like the, I guess, like the 50 ml, like shooter style, where it's like for quick consumption, it's all for packaged and take-home. So that's really about it.
This is no different than what we looked at a year and a half ago, right?
Okay. Yeah, see, I'm not sure. So this was put on my desk this morning.
So I think this is identical. And unfortunately, Scott's not here, but he was the one, I think, who was most adamant. And I think the majority of the board were against it about gas stations selling hard liquor. They just, I mean, unless somebody's changed their mind, I think that there was a consensus of at least four trustees, and I don't remember any dissenting votes, that felt that, you know, that gas stations can sell beer and wine, but when it comes to hard liquor, that was just, you know, a bridge too far. And I don't think anybody's fought, have the view to reconsider that.
My feelings were not as strong as Scott's, but they're very close behind him. I just, I think our community has moved a long way over the past 10 to 15 years, as far as making liquor more available, whether it's in, you know, restaurants, or whether it's in, you know, salons. To me, and I'll also admit, when Walgreens came in to vote for sale of hard liquor, I was against that.
Okay.
I just see the difference between beer and wine versus hard liquor, especially when you've got a lot of transient traffic going through there. I know people don't, may not intend to, you know, consume immediately, but it's just something, I don't think it's, it could be more of a detriment to the village than a negative, in my opinion.
Anybody have a different view? Nope? Let's try.
All right. Well, fair enough. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
All right. Take care.
Have a good night.
Can't blame a guy for trying.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay. Neil?
Okay. So item 6B is to approve an intergovernmental agreement with the Illinois Tollway to design, construct and landscape an underground water detention system on Tollway-owned property on Harding, along Harding Road. And the impetus was, when the Tollway started to, began to widen the Tollway to improve their service, they identified an area along Harding Road where they wanted to have a water detention system. So they went ahead and acquired five properties along Harding Road. And their plan was to have an open surface water detention area. They would be surrounded by an eight-foot chain-link fence, not exactly picturesque. So the village began working with the Tollway to evaluate the cost difference between an open surface water detention system versus a below-ground water detention system. And they were able to work things out such that the Tollway will build an underground, they'll basically put a crib underneath there that will handle all the water that was going to be on this above-ground thing. And basically, you can, if you look at that picture up there, the area that's kind of highlighted in blue-green, those are the properties that are being acquired. And they're going to, that's where they're going to put their detention system, they're going to then landscape it, they'll be covered with grass. And this will just be an extension of Woodland Park, which is to the left. Now, you know, some of us on the village board, you know, we may not know all the different areas of Hinsdale. And I sort of knew about this Woodland Park, but this is a large park. I mean, you could just buy, build a nine-hole golf course there. So, and this is just going to add to the park, it'll be, you know, go another several, I don't know, 100 yards or something like that. And this is just going to be a real win-win system for the village, as opposed to having, you know, this open thing with the chain-link fence. So basically, what we're looking at is a motion, this is a first read, to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Tollway for this.
Good, Neil? As far as taking care of the park, or taking care of this area, the Tollway is going to mow it?
No, we are. We are. So this has been, this has been going on for a long time. And Brad, and Bill Ryan's here as the attorney that helped us on this. And Bill, by the way, is one of the best attorneys I've ever worked with. He's really, really a great attorney. And he's been negotiating with the Tollway, which has gone through several management changes. So that we dropped this and picked this up. And Brad's been working on it a long time, and it's really taken a while. But as the trustees may remember, we put in one of these underground tanks behind Kensington that stopped all the flooding on Madison. And, you know, I remember the guy, I asked the guy, "Is this going to work?" And he said it would, and it has. I mean, we haven't had any flooding on Madison, and that used to flood every time we've gotten heavy rains. So this, these...
Highlands, too, right?
Highlands, too.
Right, the vaults under this Highlands, right?
Yeah. But the one on Madison's been in there longer, and I think it's been subject to more heavy rains than the newer one. But these things do work. And so, you know, the prospect of digging a hole, because the homes that we're talking about were 621, 635, 645, 655, and 710 Harding Road. So you've got these five homes that they were going to knock down, build this huge drainage ditch, and put a 10-foot chain-link fence around it. And now we, you know, the expansion of the Tollway is bad enough, but to add this insult to injury to this neighborhood was just too much. So, you know, we negotiated long and hard with the Tollway, where they would put in this underground vault, it would get all the water, so we're not going to have a water issue there, because we know these things work. They're going to put, you know, grass on top, they will maintain the tank, we will maintain the surface. They are going to do all the landscaping. So they're going to put in trees around the perimeter, trees, you know, towards the Tollway side, and trees towards the street side. And it's just going to be a beautiful park. And it's, and what we're giving in return is that we've given the Tollway the right to take down 58 trees, potentially. Now, they may not...
They may take them down.
They may take them down. And most of the trees are scrub trees. They're not even, they're not even trees worth saving. So it may be that they don't take down any trees, it may be they take down some trees. But, you know, it seemed to us to be a very good deal. I think it's going to be a real benefit to that area. And I think having a park will ameliorate some of the traction that comes from widening the Tollway. So I think this is a real victory. And again, to Brad and Kathleen, and I think Bill Ryan did a great job.
And this is all at no cost to the village?
No cost to the village, except that the 58 trees, yeah. They take care of the tank, we take care of the surface. We have to plant the grass, or mow the grass. They're going to put in all the landscaping, but we mow the grass. Anything to add, Bill?
No, that explains it.
Yep. That's what I like about Bill. A lawyer doesn't always have to talk. All right.
So consent agenda?
Consent agenda. Thanks, Bill. I mean, how many drafts do we go through with this thing? Like 50?
Lot of calculations.
Lot of calculations. So it's a big victory for Hinsdale. Okay, we then moving on to Luke?
Yep. Which moves us on to agenda item 6C. And this is an ordinance for a special use permit and a concurrent site plan and exterior appearance to redevelop an existing freestanding building at 101 West Chestnut Street for a new veterinary clinic. 101 West Chestnut Street is immediately to the north of Fuller Car Wash and immediately south of the strip mall, which runs contiguous to the BNSF tracks. There is a plot of survey in our packet which describes exactly where this is, which is helpful as we review this. The property is located in the B1 Community Business District, where pet hospitals and veterinary services are classified as a special use, and a special use only in freestanding buildings. So these types of businesses cannot be in a strip mall. The applicant does not intend to board animals overnight, which would be a separate special use permit. So if the applicant does want to start boarding animals two or three years down the road, it would have to come back before the board. The property used to be operated as a bank and is currently vacant. I would note that there are no residential properties within 250 feet of the property, and it is surrounded by, as I mentioned, Fuller's Car Wash, which is in the B1 District to the north, multi-tenant shopping in the B3 District to the south, a village-owned parking lot to the east across from Lincoln Street, and the grand shopping square in the B1 District immediately to the west. The business does intend to operate Monday through Fridays from approximately 7:30 to 5:30. The applicant only expects about two to three employees at first, with maybe one to two customers per hour. But as the business grows, it does not expect to ever to exceed 20 people on the property at any single time. I believe that the current application and use will be less intensive than a bank branch, but there's no studies to back that up. That's just my opinion. Additionally, the applicant has taken steps to mitigate any adverse impacts, including, as I mentioned, no overnight boarding. The outdoor area for animal relief will be fully screened and air-rated. The property will not be used, and also, this area will not be used as a dog run. And as they let the dogs out to go to the bathroom, only one dog will go out at a single time. Parking is also adequate with a total of 32 spaces versus 14 as required by code for this property. Moving from the special use on to the site plan and exterior appearance, I do think it is important to look at the drawings that we have in our packet, only because, for some reason, this building was not immediately, I did not immediately recollect this building after probably driving by it 1,000 times. But there used to be a drive-through on the west side of the building, a bank drive-through. The existing canopy will remain as planned, but in order to comply with our code, the applicant will remove all of the drive-through accessories and infill the existing windows with brick. On the west side of the building, other site improvements will include, and this is where I think it's important to look at the property, specifically on... Yeah, if you go to page 4, or I'm sorry, page 3, let's take the site overview here on the west side. There will be a loading space that measures 10 by 46 feet. This will be for lab pickup and crematorium drop-offs. I would note there will not be a crematorium on-site.
So what does that mean, then?
They're not going to cremate any animals. They'll have...
With the drop-off?
Yeah, they'll have service come and pick them up.
I got it. I got it. Okay.
Yeah. Also, the outdoor animal exposure will also be 10 by 46 feet, and this will be fully fenced, air-rated into the existing storm sewer. There's a park wet for employees measuring 8 feet by 16 feet, which will sit on the blacktop and be constructed of steel frame and wood planks. The best way to describe this is, we were looking at the outdoor dining area. Remember how we were going to have wood sit on top, typically referred to as a plank, if this is very similar to what they're suggesting to put in here? Also, the applicant will put five fiberglass planter boxes on the west side, and then a dumpster enclosure measuring 4 feet by 10 feet, with fencing that matches the materials that are used for the existing animal enclosure.
Where is the, where dogs relieve themselves? Right there?
Yep. One, or drop-off, dogs.
Okay. Got it.
And both are the exact same size, 10 by 46. Lastly, there was a public hearing that was held by the Plan Commission. This was on August 10. At this hearing, there were no residents that spoke in opposition of the application, and also, the Plan Commission did recommend unanimously approval of the application by a vote of 6 to 0. I do know that the applicant is here this evening, if you want to make a brief statement about the business and the improvements to the property.
Good evening. My name's Patrick McGinnis. I'm an attorney at Donatellian Coles, representing the applicant. Just to expand a little bit more on what trustee said, the applicant lives locally in Western Springs and is looking to bring a business to Hinsdale. Part of the reason she chose Hinsdale was that her lender did a market analysis of the area, which found that there was actually a need, in addition to just being able to support a second veterinary practice in the community. So we feel that it's also bringing some public good by bringing a business that was found to be needed by the community. The cremation, just to clarify on that, on the west side of the property, there will be a loading zone. Essentially, there's a service that comes with the vehicle, they pick up the animals, they take them off-site to cremate them, and then bring them back, drop it off at an urn. So no other cremation will be happening on-site. The outdoor space that will be fenced in, again, is just used for animals to go outside to relieve. The animals will be with a worker at all times, they're just brought outside and then brought back in. No animals will be left unattended. The space will have a drainage system in place and a similar materials that are used at a boarding facility in Burr Ridge that has about 100 to 150 dogs on that property as well. They've had no issues with drainage or smell or anything like that, so.
So this property has, the formal address is on Chestnut Street, but the front entrance is on Lincoln, faces Lincoln, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay. And on the north, south, and east side, are there any improvements to the property, or is it as-is right now?
Yeah. And, yeah, nothing at this time is being done to those sides of the property.
Could you go over that drainage? I don't quite understand what's happening. I mean, you know, when the pets relieve themselves.
Correct. So there's basically a drainage system that will pipe into like the underground sewage system.
The sewer system, okay.
And then there will also be like a water spigot outdoors so that they can keep the area clean.
You had said something about it being air-rated? Is that what?
Yeah.
What does that mean?
Probably better off we have the applicant describe that, because from what I understand, there's a similar one in Burr Ridge.
Yeah. I'm Sarah Beher, and I'm the applicant. I guess I don't know, honestly, that term. So I spoke to a large daycare, like Patrick referenced, that has about 100, 150 dogs out there, essentially just a turf area, which you just need to make sure those spaces under the drains into the sewage. And that's what we have set up. There's just special cleaning tools that we would use when they're out there, and like we said, we, based as my staff, will always be with them. They're not like, they're just going to be out there. And there's a spigot out there as well, just to help clean it up, in the sense that not just going to be leaving anything out there and coming right back in the building, it's just easy cleanup and it'll go straight down.
So no odor issues? That's, I guess, my concern.
Water issues?
Order, order issues.
Oh, no, that's because it's immediate, and it all just goes straight down, and the turf is already kind of treated that way, and then the pets will still use it as well.
Okay. Thank you.
By with me?
I've got no other questions. So on the way the process runs, we have a first read this evening, and then a second read two weeks from this evening. Unless you hear from staff, it's probably not necessary for you to come back. And we'll vote on it that evening, though.
Welcome to Hinsdale.
Thank you very much. Which moves us to agenda item 6D. And this is an ordinance to create a historical overlay district for which the historical preservation incentives will be created for qualifying single-family homes. We are all very familiar with this. Bethany Salmon and Michael Mars are going to provide a summary of the steps that have taken, that we've taken, and specific changes that will be made to the code. I think that this board does recall that we've had eight committee-of-the-whole meetings before board of trustee meetings from May of 2021 to January of 2022. We did refer this matter on to Plan Commission, which did hold a public hearing on the matter on August 10. There were no changes from Plan Commission at all. So I think we probably did a decent job, or staff did a decent job of putting it forward to them. So Bethany and Michael?
Yeah, I can start it off. So I know we've had a year and a half of planning for what we have in front of us today. The intent of these regulations, as you guys are aware, is to figure out how to actually incentivize preservation in the village, and how we can actually protect historic buildings and, you know, encourage historic preservation. It has been quite a bit to get here, so we're going to try to do the best overview we can. We had quite a lengthy public hearing, but it went pretty well, otherwise. We didn't have any members of the public attend, and it was approved, as is the ordinance is in front of you today. So the way that we're going to kind of do it is just go through all the exhibits that are currently in the packet. The first exhibit was, is Exhibit 1, that's this one that has the red-lined version in it. This exhibit is everything that was, the ordinance that was, or the text amendment that was presented to you in April of 2022, this year, and all the changes since that meeting. So the major changes based on the board feedback was that we wanted to include some of the actual numbers in the ordinance, and we had a couple of other updates, but nothing large. So this is what is in front of you today, is pretty much the exact same things since we came in April of '26 with those changes. Exhibit 2 is the exact same, since we brought this for a referral. This item is our draft program incentive packet, so this is what hopefully applicants will see. We have a couple of tweaks that we might need to do since then. But in general, this is our application packet and information. And I'll go into each of these incentives a little bit more as we kind of move along. So Exhibit 3, this is, this is the map that really matters right now. This is our proposed historic overlay district map. So the way that we are proposing to provide these historic preservation incentives is through a historic overlay district. I'm going to bump it over to Michael Mars in a second to kind of go over and explain what that is and how that's going to function in the village. Basically, what we did when we were analyzing how to figure out what properties to include and how to do it, we have looked and excluded areas on our zoning map. The O3 District, the B3 District, the R5 District, and the R6 District, because these districts did kind of look like we did not have a significant amount of historic properties within them. Just because you're in this historic overlay district doesn't mean you might be eligible for the preservation incentives that we're going to talk about in a minute, and that's kind of an important note. And anyone who might be on this future list, which we'll talk about, you know, may actually not be, they might be in a historic overlay district, but they might not actually be on this list. So I'm going to kind of bump it back to Michael right now, so he can talk about what a historic overlay district is, just to remind everyone, and then I'll go a little bit further into the actual preservation incentives that we're proposing.
All right. Thanks, Bethany. So you'll recall from some of our early committee-of-the-whole meetings on this subject, that we looked at various mechanisms for accomplishing some of the goals of the board, including the types of incentives offered by not only communities in Illinois, but elsewhere. And after we had an idea of what kind of incentives you were interested in providing, we looked at what kind of amendments we could make, both to Title 14 of the Village Code regarding preservation and to the zoning code, in order to memorialize those goals and incentives and procedures that you were interested in providing. So eventually, we settled on this idea of a historic preservation overlay district. And just as a reminder, for the benefit of the public who may not be familiar with this concept, it's not a new or different base zoning district like your existing residential or commercial districts. It overlays those districts, it actually lays on top of them. So in an overlay district, the existing base zoning regulations continue to apply, but are in some cases altered or modified by the overlay district regulations for these particular properties that we're going to focus on in terms of historic significantly significant structures. And this idea of an overlay, it's not an entirely new concept in Hinsdale. Article 8 of your existing zoning code is actually entitled overlay districts and includes regulations for the design review overlay district that imposes additional design review regulations on the area around Ground Mill. And also, while it's not phrased as such, some of your longstanding zoning code provisions, providing different bulk standards for certain legal non-conforming lots of record, or giving special considerations to pre-code structures, those are, in effect, village-wide zoning[1760.23] special considerations to pre-code structures, those are, in effect, village-wide overlay districts, similar in concept to what we're proposing here, where certain properties are singled out for slightly different treatment from a zoning standpoint for a particular reason. So once we settled on this idea of a historic overlay district, we mapped out the steps to creating it, which you see here in the text amendment ordinance. Step 1 was creating this actual text, which you see before it. We've had lots of discussions about that. Step 2 was determining the boundaries of the district. And as Bethany said, the idea was to include within the overlay all the areas of town where there might be a structure that would be deemed to be historically significant, and that's reflected in the map that's before you, in your agenda packet as Exhibit 3. Step 3, we're in the middle of right now, that was the public hearing before the Plan Commission, and then, you know, first and second reading here before the board. Step 4 will come after approval by the board, and that's going to, where it goes, that involves creation by the Historic Preservation Commission of this initial list of historically significant properties that will be eligible for these voluntary incentives. So once you enact these text amendments and overlay district boundaries, the clock will start on HPC. They have six months, 180 days, to kind of create this initial list of properties for placement on the list, proposed for placement on the list. And essentially, they're going to be looking at the universe of buildings within the village and identifying the ones that they want to prioritize preserving through the incentives being offered. So nothing we're doing today will ultimately stop anyone from tearing down a home if it's not a historic landmark and they ultimately want to, but the hope is that these changes will at least give them pause, make it more practical to preserve an existing significant home instead of tearing it down. So the HPC will create this list, hold a public hearing, make recommendations on the list to the board, and you will approve the list. And then the final step, after that list is created, those owners of those identified structures are eligible on a voluntary basis to request these various incentives going forward through an application and review process.
And Michael, if after that list is created, if someone is not on that list, but they want to be or believe they should be, there's a process they can?
Absolutely. There's a similar process built in where they can apply to the village to be added to the list, and after a consideration by the HPC and a recommendation here, they can be added to the list. So the hope is we'll create this initial universe of properties and other people will be interested when the program gets some momentum and want to be on the list.
Michael, similarly, can you be removed from the list if you're put on the list?
Yes, so buildings that are knocked down, that are on the list, will automatically be taken off the list. But conversely, we want this list to not just be static. We want the HPC to look at it from time to time, identify houses that may be taken off the list, or, and I don't know that anyone would, considering it's completely voluntary, I don't know that anyone would come in and want to be taken off the list, but it's possible.
Well, there's a little education there. Somebody just sort of sees it on their title, they might think it obligates them in some way.
Right, so we want to continue to educate, and that brings me to my final point, is we want to, after all these steps are created and this list is created, one of the things is we're going to send notifications to all these homes on the list. It will be made, this list will be made available on the village's website, will be provided to area realtors, to the news media, and other persons or entities as necessary in an effort to publicize this and its intent and the incentives available. And we are going to record notices on title for each of these historically significant structures. And the idea is if somebody is buying a house, sees this on their title, that they will hopefully contact the village and look into what kind of incentives are available that will enable them to do different things with the property in lieu of tearing down the house. So that's kind of the general overview of the process. Does anyone have any further questions before I throw it back to Bethany?
Is the HPC ready to do this within 180 days?
So that's a great question. We actually, even without the, without the full marketing and contacting and education that we'd like to do and, you know, marketing this program to the community, we already have at least 10 homeowners that have already contacted us without us even reaching out to anyone. So we have a, you know, group of homeowners that are super excited to get on this list and want to move forward, so we already have that list, if we want to, created. And the hope is that we don't need to do these, hopefully, one house by one house. We're going to bring, you know, 10, 20 properties together over and over, kind of try to bulk these properties together over time.
And if I could, the HPC list does not have to be every house that ever, is ever going to be on the list. They could say, these are the 25 we want to prioritize right now, and put those forward in the first 180 days. They could come up with an additional 50, three months after that, whatever, but, so, but they do have to present under the ordinance something in 180 days.
So they can add homes after 180 days?
Absolutely, yeah. And the idea is maybe we bring them forward in kind of a small group, you know, initially, or, it depends how their work goes.
So will these homes come to the board?
Yes, they're going to make recommendations to the board and you will have ultimate approval of the list.
And we haven't talked about this, but there's, we've talked about it at Committee of the Whole meetings, but there's reference guys they can look at previously. They're not starting from scratch here.
Great, in most cases, we're very lucky in that at least 20 years ago, we have historic surveys that were done for a large portion of the village, so we do have a backdrop of a lot of the historic properties. There's a couple of scattered sites where we probably are going to need to work with the Historical Society and do a little bit more digging on certain homes, but we do have a lot of historic information readily available.
And the Preservation Commission is very involved and knowledgeable and has a lot of institutional knowledge of the homes, so I think it will be fairly simple for them to move forward with a certain group.
Okay, so now that we don't have any other questions, right, the second on the actual process for creating this district, I'm going to kind of go into the five actual preservation incentives that we're offering that's included in this ordinance. So the first one that we're proposing is the alternative zoning regulations. So these would apply to any of the single-family homes in our single-family zoning districts. That's the R1, R2, R3, and R4 zoning districts. We looked at our, a lot of the feedback that we got was that our zoning code is really challenging, a lot of people have a hard time meandering through, a lot of our older homes also have a higher risk of having to go through the variation process. So we wanted to make some alternative regulations that might make it easier for someone to actually build an addition, modernize their home, enlarge the building so that they can get that open concept floor plan that everyone wants, or some additional rooms, or enlarge some of the rooms, that are generally pretty small in historic properties. So we looked at the existing code regulations that are included in Exhibit 4. These are primarily the bulk regulations for the single-family homes. And then we came up with a second set of alternative bulk regulations in Exhibit 5. Exhibit 5 kind of does a comparison of existing versus, you know, what we're proposing, and then it also includes some different examples of historic properties, some of which have since been demolished, some of which were threatened, and kind of show, at least for setbacks, what it means. In most of these cases, we were gaining about 5 to 10 feet of setback relief for rear yards or side yards, which could significantly help in certain cases, especially one where we were looking at, like the 420 South Park property, where it actually could make a big difference if someone wanted to have an attached garage or an addition put on. So we spent a lot of time on these bulk zoning regulations. In essence, these include using building elevation to limit all additions to not exceed the existing highest ridge line of a house. We're not allowing people to further subdivide a property, you have to maintain the existing lot. We've included information, we've included some reduced side or rear yard setbacks, and we're waiving floor area ratio, and that's a big one that we know people have faced a lot of time with these historic homes. We are keeping front yard setback at currently how we have it with block average, but we wouldn't allow someone to put a building addition onto their front of their house. You know, in essence, the front of the house should be the primary historic facade, and that's what we really want and focusing people on to preserve. We are proposing no changes to building coverage. We've given a slight increase, a 10% increase to lot coverage from 50 to 60%, and that's obviously to allow for those building additions, subject to not having adverse impacts on adjacent properties. So like I said, we've included some examples in Exhibit 5, and in general, we know that these bulk regulations were not intended to just throw the code books out. They're pretty minimal, and there will still be cases where variations are going to be needed, special circumstances, but we're hoping that this does help people get that relief to encourage those renovation projects. Okay, so we have a couple of other incentives that we're looking at. We also proposed historic preservation matching fund grants. This is where the village would pay for 50% of the eligible costs up to maximum of $10,000 with an owner investment of $20,000. This could be for exterior improvements as well as other historic preservation projects. It could be for a historic preservation survey, a tax credit application, a national register nomination, broad uses for historic preservation. We're also allowing for building permit fee waivers and waivers for any sort of application for zoning entitlement, historic preservation, landmark designation. And then we are also offering a property tax rebate for the village portion of a property owner's tax bill. This would be only for substantial exterior improvements, so the minimum investment here for exterior work would be $50,000, and we would extend that rebate just for the village portion for over a maximum period of five years. And like I said, that's a rebate, so we'd be giving that back to someone at the end of every year. Once they've paid in full, we'll issue that money back. And then the last one is expedited processing, where, you know, we have the ability to do some in-house reviews or send out for reviews to turn people's building permits around quicker.
And Bethany, I'm sorry, but on these, for these rebates, we're setting up a budgeted number to begin with so that we keep it within a range, correct?
We have not set up like a maximum amount per year because we really haven't figured out what the interest would be yet from people, you know? We don't really know because that's the one with the substantial investment of 50,000. We don't know what level of investment we're going to get for those yet.
We have a budget for the grants, but not for the property.
Correct, that original was just for the grants.
30,000, okay, yeah.
But each one of those, so I'm, the next thing is that, of what the approval process is, so we've kind of set it up where a permit fee waiver and the alternative zoning regulations, the Historic Preservation Commission will have final authority over those, but for the larger financial items like the property tax incentives and the grants, we are going to bring those to the board, because obviously that could have larger budgetary impact. So every time one comes forward, it'll come here, we'll have a separate preservation incentive agreement, and we'll be able to track that and provide that to the board each time of, here's where we're at with this application, here's where we're at with this, compounded with the previous.
Okay, thank you.
So Matt, maybe you're answering my question, but, so we're going to have something in the budget that, because I mean, there's costs involved that the village is going to incur here, right?
Yeah, we don't, I don't think we have anything in the budget for property tax rebates, but we do have in this year's budget $30,000 for grants.
We increased the historic. We increased the historic preservation budget by that amount, and if the board is so inclined, we certainly can take the remaining balance, set it up into a fund, and have the unused amounts carry over so the fund builds up, instead of going back into the general fund and being part of the reserve balance, if that's what the board wants us to do.
One thing I'd like to point out as well that came up at our Plan Commission public hearing is that Historic Preservation Fund can get private donations. And I know a couple of our Plan Commissioners thought that was a great part of it. There was a couple of questions with that about how, what if someone wants to donate money for a specific project and how the village could accept that? So I think that that's one thing, private donations are welcome in that fund, too. And then the last part here is we do have in Exhibit 6, some standards of approval. Obviously, the HPC will be reviewing these with the basic principles of preservation, which are the Secretary of Interior Standards for Rehabilitation. And then Exhibit 7, I think this came up at a Committee of the Whole meeting. This was the preliminary financial evaluation, kind of what we were talking about before, of if we waive this many fee waivers, here's what it might mean for the budget down the road, but realistically, we don't know quite yet what the level of, you know, interest is going to be in the community, and we'll keep monitoring that over time. And that's it for right now. I know we took a little bit longer time than normal, so we're here to answer any questions.
That was fairly concise for the eight meetings that we had, and, you know?
A year and a half.
Things that we all discussed, so, you know, given that, you know, given the, I think the momentum that this has had through, you know, the better part of the past eight months, and then also at the Plan Commission, I don't have any other questions, thoughts?
A lot of hard work went into this.
Yeah, just, Michael, maybe you can just take a look at this language here. I'm just wondering what, maybe that should be like exterior improvements, or maybe just cross-reference, you know, one provision with the other.
Okay. What section is that?
This is, this is the New Blue language in Exhibit, I'm just drafting.
Exhibit 1?
Yeah, yeah, it's really just a draft and comment.
So we put this on for a second read, then?
Yeah, we'll put it, and we can make whatever changes are needed to that New Language.
Okay. All right, anybody else have any comments on that? I know it took a long, long time, and I think it's a really good work product. So that takes us.
Say thanks to the staff. This is Laurel. Thank you for moving things along this far. It's something that's been talked about for years, and this is a really, it seems like a really fine product, and, you know, that it could have wide acceptance in the community, which is the whole idea. So thank you.
Agreed. So that takes us to Consent Agenda Items. I think, Matt, you had the accounts payable?
Yes, I had the bag. So there were a couple of checks that were removed from the list that was in the packet, so we have a revised item on the table, 7A, with a slightly lower amount. So I would move to approve payment of the accounts payable for the period of August 11, 2022 through August 31, 2022, in the aggregate amount of $1,616,316.63, as set forth on the list provided by the Village Treasurer, of which a permanent copy is on file with the Village Clerk.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Next items are Consent Agenda Items 7B and 7C. Can I have a motion with respect to those items?
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items 7B and 7C.
Second.
We'll call vote.
Trustee Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Which moves us to Agenda Item 8A, and this is ordinance for exterior appearance and site plan for the facade and other improvements to an existing building at 14 West First Street. This is a second read, so we'll vote on this this evening. The property is located in the B2 Central Business District and is contiguous to all properties in the B2, or all the properties contiguous to it are in the B2. The property is a two-story, 4,000-square-foot building. The first floor is going to be utilized as a beauty salon, which is a permitted use on the first floor, and the second floor will be utilized as a medical office, which is also a permitted use on the second floor. The building is classified as a contributing structure in the downtown Hinsdale Historic District. The HPC, or I'm sorry, the Hinsdale Historic Preservation Commission and the Plan Commission, and at our last meeting, the primary amount of the discussion was with regard to the elevator shaft, which is located on the top, or extends on the top of the roof in the northwest corner by 1 foot 8 inches, which is, which we determined at our last meeting is not visible from the streetscape. And since our last meeting, I would note that there has been a change to this application. And if you look in your packet, and it is detailed on the second, I'm sorry, yeah, on the first and the third pages, basically, the request is to extend the mechanical screening on the roof from a total length of 13 feet 4 inches to 30 feet and 3 inches. Now, this extension runs directly to the south, so it goes from the, there's no existing addition to the front, it just goes all along the rear, further in the back, and it's not visible at all from the street. If you want to look at it on the, on the air, on the photographs that they've shown here, the new scale is on the third page, which it's right in the middle of the building and looks as though it's not going to be visible at all. So those were the only changes.
What's the reason for that?
They're going to add additional mechanicals to the, on the top of the building. I'm assuming it's probably for air conditioners. But really, it's for the, yeah, the screening is what they're extending. I would also note that there were unanimous recommendations by Historic Preservation and the Plan Commission, and the only discussion we had at the last meeting was with regard to the elevator shaft.
Could you please go up to, could you please go up to the podium?
Like from?
We would have to do some exterior work that would not be commensurate with our process, so that necessitated having the unit on the roof.
Oh, that's correct, from both Dr. D'Wolfe and I think Luke as well. So we're just extending to the back, adding a second rooftop unit. I believe this board, for the first reading, was one rooftop unit, so now it's just a second rooftop unit closer to the rear, closer to the rear. That's really the main difference.
I've got no issue with that. All right, any questions?
Any questions, thoughts from trustees?
Hearing none, I'll make a motion to approve an ordinance approving an exterior appearance and site plan for the facade and other improvements to an existing building at 14 West First Street, known as Elevator MD.
Second.
Will call vote?
Trustee Postuma?
Aye.
Trustee Harlow?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Stifler?
Aye.
Trustee Fisher?
Aye.
Trustee Burns?
Aye.
Okay, it takes us to a couple of discussion items. The first item is, we talked about this briefly last meeting, that we would make some, we're considering some municipal parking lot changes. And staff has come up with eight suggestions. I'd like to just go through them, all eight, and then if somebody wants to talk about one, or delete one, or add one, or two, we can do that, and then we can bring it as a motion. So first is, we're considering with respect to the village lot, it's now restricted to residents, and given that it's about 25% full on most weekdays, we're considering opening it up to non-residents. It used to be that we had 100-person excess on the list, on the waiting list for that before pre-pandemic. So now we've not only lost the excess on the list, where we've lost three-quarters of the people that were parking there. So we think that if we open it up to non-residents, we could attract more commuters to the town and garner more parking revenue. So that's number one. Number two, we would continue the six-month commuter permit, which is what we typically had, but as we talked about last time, many people weren't working for a full week. So in connection with that, we would also have, and you see this down at 5, we would have a, an option for a daily parking fee of 350 that you could use a pay-by-tax on your smartphone, so you could pay by the day. So we had, continue the six-month, plus have the pay-by-day. We continue to offer the six-month, both for the commuters and for merchants. Then there's another lot that is called the Main Depot Burlington Drive, and that's the single row of parking that is to the north of the tracks, and there's probably, what, 30 spaces there? And I think that was merchant parking, God knows why. I don't know why a merchant would want to park there, but we think we can get premium cost for there because it's a very desirable location. If it's raining, you get off the train, and you're in your car, so maybe we can charge $100 a day. I don't know what we can charge for that, but we're going to figure out some way to maximize the value of that, right? We just keep raising it until people don't want to rent them anymore, and then we stop. So anyway, we thought, that's another way we can get some, some money out of that. Then, as to the commuter lots, I think the way it used to be back pre-COVID is you had to have a pass up until 9:30, and then after 9:30, anybody could park there, but we're thinking of having standardized lot hours from 6 to 6, so that we, so you could still pay 350 to park there or get a monthly pass, but we would, but they, it would be, it would be required that you have a, some permit or daily or monthly to park there all day, not just before 9:30, which used to be one of the purely commuter lot that we did. Then the last one is Brad's brainchild, and I think this is a good one, that we have spaces in the Robbins Park parking lot near the community house that is used for, that I guess are not used routinely at this point, but we think we can use those for Hinsdale Central students who want to park there and charge them $400 a semester or $800 a year, and so we can get some value from those. And I think that's a, it's a good idea.
But just to be clear, this, this isn't driven by anything to do with the pandemic?
No, no, no.
This is just something?
No, it's just a underutilized parking.
Yep. Okay. So we own that property, or that parking lot at Robbins Park?
Yeah.
Okay, so we get the revenue comes right to us, then?
The revenue comes right to us. The community house has their own parking. Yeah.
Okay, so this is that, by the tenants' court?
Exactly, exactly. So, and it's not all the space, it'd be some of the spaces, right?
Just some of them. We'd still have spaces available for people wanting to use the parking lot. That's a great idea.
So I think it is a great idea. And so, you know, that's, this is what, that's why we've got the best staff ever. They think of ways to make money. And then we have, and then the last thing is to provide online sales of parking permits rather than having to fill out the usual form and mail it back, which, you know, brings us into the 21st century. So those are the ideas. We can put those in a first read next time. If anybody thinks any of these is a bad idea or has another idea, you know, we could talk about them now, we could talk about them before the next meeting.
What's the rationale for adding Saturday to paid parking?
Just to have uniformity in application amongst the lots, because right now, all of our lots in the downtown area are, I'm sorry, Monday through Saturday, the only day you don't have to pay is Sunday. So we want to make the lot right now for the village lot is Monday through Friday. So we want to make it consistent with the other lots in the downtown area.
So then if you don't want to pay, you just go to the deck? Is that?
Yes.
Currently, currently, yeah.
Right.
But that's, so that's, that's, if you, if you, on Saturday, if you want to go shopping downtown, we would just, you'd just park in the deck if you didn't want to have to pay?
Right.
Or the free three-hour zone parking available out in front of the store.
Right.
Theoretically.
Yep.
So right now, our red permit numbers are down because we think that the red permit holders, where the merchants are parking in the village lot after 9:30 and taking advantage of that free parking. So we've kind of cannibalized our red permit areas because they're parking for free in the village lot when they couldn't before because of commuters being, building the lot, so it's just a better use of that commodity.
Makes sense, Matt?
Yeah, and then I had one other question. This is on page three. You have listed the other, 180 other spaces. What's, what's their current, are those the ones you're saying that are already Monday through Saturday? Or, I was just wondering what's happening with them?
Yeah, those, those are the permit spots right now. So in addition to the village lot, we have red-blue parking, which is merchant or commuter parking on Hinsdale Avenue in front of the post office, to the north side of the post office. So we're opening those up for any daily parking.
Oh, okay, so those will be daily parking as well?
As well, yes.
Okay, okay.
In addition to that area.
Okay. They're all, that's pay-by-tax, 350, okay.
Yeah. Or you can buy a six-month and park in those lots, too.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. All right, so we bring this in a first read next time? So this is just, just a discussion item at this point. All right, that takes us to the next item, Lead Service Line Replacement Act. So this is an act that has been passed by the state of Illinois in 2021, becomes effective January 1, 2022. My understanding, I talked to Mark Polkowski about this today, and I learned more about water and sewers than I'll ever need to know, but apparently, there's a number of states that have passed these kinds of acts in the wake of Flint, Michigan. So because we're in an older community, we have, I guess we have 5,785 service addresses that are hooked up to our water system. Based upon the village's records, we believe that about 49 of those addresses have lead pipes, and I guess these are the pipes that lead from the street to the house, not the pipes in the house, but the street to the house. And according to Mark, it's not a cause for concern because there's nothing, there's nothing problematic with having lead pipes. It's not a health concern if the pipe is not disturbed. Apparently, that if, these are older homes, and if, and the pipes build up a sediment inside them, and he says this even happens with modern pipes. He says that they, that they actually add something to the water to cause this to happen with respect to copper pipes. But apparently, there's enough built up in the pipes that you, that no one is really getting lead, and apparently, we test for lead periodically every year, and we don't see any lead in the water. But this is a state law that if, if the pipe is lead, that there has to be a plan to remove or replace the lead pipe by April 15, 2024. So this is not a public health emergency, it's something that the state wants to do, which is probably a good idea, but there's, even with these 49 homes that may or likely have lead pipes, there's no reason to think there's a health concern there. Then there's 705 homes that we don't know what kind of material they have, because we just don't have records of them. Many houses have replaced their piping, have been torn down, have done remodeling. And so letters have gone out to those, those homes, I think in addition to the 49 other homes, to just double-check, to, and we sent letters to the, to the homeowner saying that the water department liked to come in for 10 minutes, look at these, these feed pipes to see whether they are lead, and then develop a plan to replace them. So I just want to let residents know that this is coming. There's no reason for concern, there's not some public health emergency. This is just an act that was passed by the, by the state legislature, and it's, and there's a couple of years to replace the pipes that's, if they are indeed lead. So if anybody has any problems, call us, and we'll put you in touch with Mark, and Mark will explain it all to you. Tollway update?
Nothing. President Colley.
Okay, anything else? Staff reports? Any trustees? Anything to report?
I just wanted to thank John Fennell, George Peluso, and his team for two specific items. The plantings in the front village lawn look beautiful. They are in a red, white, and blue fashion, and I think it's a great improvement to that area. And number two, I know the guys are working hard in the woodlands, on the rain gardens. I saw photos of those today.